Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session today is Thursday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We appreciate those of you that are here with us in attendance as well as those are with us online. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation of proposed Butterfly Oasis at River Park project Rotary Club of Dawson County. Brooke Anderson, Brooke. Come on up.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Good.
All right, we're gonna move through this. I don't keep you any longer than necessary. The Dawson County Rotary Club has done several projects with the park department over the last several years, including the splash pad, pickleball court, basketball courts, batting cages, and now we're back again. We want to do something.
Pickleball at the park, yep.
So we want to come back and so this year, the one of the themes of Rotary this year is protecting the environment. And so we wanted to develop a project that provided some environmental education. And we reached out to Matt Payne in terms of some ideas that he might have to do that. So what we would like to do is to enhance the River Park down on Highway nine where the canoe launch is. And there's currently a pavilion down there. It's a metal pavilion. We want to duplicate that. I reached out to James Talbert about where did he get it and so we can match it up. And so what we're proposed to do is to install the pavilion. It'd be about eighteen by twenty inside. So that and we'll put picnic table under it and around it so that folks can have birthday parties or whatever, whatever event they want to have there. And we're gonna put in a butterfly garden slash pollinator education garden down there. So we're gonna plant some plants and and do that. So we'll have some signage up about the importance of pollinator gardens and those type of things. We do recognize that the area floods and our intent is that the pavilion will be metal. And then but we will, we plan to come back each and every year to replace and enhance the garden area. So that if the area floods and the plants die, we'll be back following early, late winter, early spring to replace those for the coming year. So it'll be an annual service project that we plan to do going forward. As I mentioned, we'll have educational signage and we'll have mulch ground cover because the county produces a lot of mulch with the road department and those type of things. So it'll be low maintenance on everybody's park. So yeah, thank you. So if you look at the picture on the screen, you see the road that comes off of Highway nine. In the cyan color, we'll have the pavilion and then north of there would be the butterfly garden. And we wanted something that would make a pop and a sciffle. And we found this butterfly sculpture that is actually custom made. The body on the butterfly is six feet long and the wings are six feet tall. So it's a sizable butterfly sculpture. And I think that when people go up and down Highway nine, don't tell them go to the canoe launch. You tell them go to the butterfly and hang a left or right, and they'll get the picture when they get there. So if the board approves the Rotary Club moving this project forward, we plan to have it completed by the end of February. And have everything installed and ready to go such that as spring comes, everything will be ready, set, and ready to bloom. Exactly, you know. And so we're anticipating the cost of this project to be approximately twenty thousand dollars for all in. And certainly, everything will be dedicated to the, turned over to the county for operation maintenance. And we'll go from there. So the butterfly, by the way, will be on a ten-foot pole. I know that we'll try to get it well above the floodplain, but also just out of the climbing, the normal climbing height of most kids. So we'll hope for the best with that. Exactly. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
How big is the garden itself?
The garden itself, we really haven't defined it. It's gonna be probably thirty by thirty. So it'll be a sizable garden area. What we're thinking is we would have some boulders, some larger boulders placed in there in addition to butterfly bushes and other.
Jewelweed, jewelweed or something like that.
Yeah. I have no idea. I've got, I've got people for that. Thank you. You know.
Yeah, they love, they love.
It's like a lot of things, you know, I just, I dig the hole. So I'll dig the hole.
Well, now somebody better plant the plants that draw butterflies.
Yes, yeah, we'll have the butterfly bushes and that sort of thing. And so it'll be, it'll all be dedicated toward that and there'll be signage to, when people go up to it, they'll be able to read about it and understand the importance of pollinators and butterflies in the world.
Other questions?
I love it. You had me at butterfly. That's such, I love it. I love it. Anything environmental like that, I love it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Brooke?
Not a question, a comment. Your group, y'all's group is, I mean, they're a good steward to this county. And I've been to a couple of meetings and when y'all get on a project, excited. I mean, I've never seen so much excitement when y'all talk about projects like this. Y'all done a lot of good projects at the parks. I mean, y'all went a hundred and ten percent above on those projects. The kids have used and adults have used. So thank y'all.
Absolutely. Glad to do it. Want to bring something?
Y'all, like I said, when y'all put your mind to something, y'all do it.
We, we want to provide a good experience for the community and a good product for the county, so.
I like what Tim said. We appreciate all that y'all done. Y'all doing great work.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
Next up, we have presentation of request to release a request for proposal for operation and management of glamping sites at War Hill Park. Matt Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's always exciting to come talk to you about the Recreation Department again. So I appreciate you allowing me to come in. We have been approached with one, what I consider to be a fantastic idea, and I hope you will feel so as well, to have a couple of our campsites at War Hill converted over into what's called the glamping type of camping. So we're gonna go through this process right here and I'm gonna kind of just give you an update on what that is and why, why we think it would be beneficial. So Parks and Recreation Department was approached by Timberline Glamping Company in September regarding partnering with Dawson County to offer the glamping camping to its visitors. And I did speak with Parks and Recreation Board at our last meeting. They are completely a hundred percent on board with this project. I do have the company that is here today. I'm gonna bring them up in just a few minutes to answer any particular questions that you may have for us. So what is glamping? Glamping is outdoor camp. I'm sorry, let me hit this again. I'm sorry. Okay, glamping is, is outdoor camping, but with more with traditional, it offers more comfort than the traditional camping, but it is still outdoors. It's not in a camper. And it is, it is still on the primitive side, which really falls in line with what we do at War Hill. And but it is still, it is still primitive, but it offers a whole lot more in the way of comfort and really, really exciting stuff for people to take advantage of. So eighty percent of the new campers prefer the glamping atmospheres as over the traditional sites. I'm reading some of Ms. Hawke's notes. What are the glamping, what is the glamping market in the United States? Two thousand twenty-one market size is worth about two point thirty-five billion. Where she came up with that number, but that's awesome. So what we're looking to do from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, when we were approached by this fantastic company, we wanted to make it fair to all. We wanted to make sure that this was a situation where it, we didn't offer it to one company and not offer it to anybody else. So we had to go through the full process of having a bid process. I sought the advice of Ms. Hawke and she, she put this entire project together to make sure that we dot all of our i's and cross our t's and that nothing is left for any kind of, we want to be fully transparent. We want to make sure the entire, the public knows about what's all going on. Okay, so the scope of the project. I love it. Thanks. The scope of the project is to construct and maintain and to include cleaning of the structures with the equipment, advertise, book the reservations. They would, the particular company that would get this particular bid would be in charge of their own reservations. And then we would, they would pay us their percentage via the contract. They would work, we would handle all the risk. I mean, they would work with us on all the risk management to make sure that it's all coordinated. It would be a flat rate per day, per month, per site, and it would be, it could be paid monthly. And the percentage of the gross nightly rate would be paid monthly. For example, at War Hill right now, I think we charge sixteen dollars per night for a campsite. I think you actually will be voting tonight on some rate increases, but that could go up. But somewhere in that area, this is gonna be more, of course, and we would make a much higher percentage. So I think that we would probably make closer to the forty or fifty dollar range per night. But that's something that we would work out in a contract standpoint. Okay. Oh, sorry. And this, of course, is just the map of War Hill Park. If you're familiar with War Hill Park, there's a couple of campsites that are isolated from the other ones. And those are the ones that we have deemed to be the ideal spots for this type of camping. It's not amongst the crowd of people on the point. These are isolated, beautiful views over the lake. And this is also closest to the bathhouse, the existing power. So we will be running power from that. And I've already checked with corporate engineers. We follow into their life plan, their lifetime plan of allowing us to run power to our campsites. So we, as a staff, are recommending that the RFP for Operation and Management for the glamping sites is to be released and to ensure a fair opportunity for all other companies to offer these services to Dawson County citizens and visitors. The collaboration with finance, legal, and planning and zoning will take place to ensure that all of their relative laws, ordinance, and policies are followed. Ms. Hawke is gonna make sure that we do not do anything that's gonna get us in any kind of trouble as far as making sure everybody has an ample opportunity to bid on this. Now, the company that is here are the experts and they're the ones that's really got us fired up on it. So if you have any, I would be happy to entertain any questions, and I know that they can answer a whole lot more questions than I can. So.
Questions?
Well, does it, does that, do your company provide the tents and the refrigerators and the air conditioners?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm Nathan with Timberline Glamping Company. Thanks for having us. So yes, we provide A to Z. So it's a zero footprint left behind. So if we're, if there was ever a chance or a deal where we had to move off the site, we move off and it's, it looks like we had never been there. We hope that that doesn't happen. So but yes, we provide the tents, the air conditioners, refrigerators.
Carpet. Did I say carpet?
You did. You see rugs, nice rugs and everything else. So we try to make folks as comfortable as possible, but still enjoying the outdoors. My wife, who is a big fan of public speaking, so she sends me up here a lot of times. So she came up with this idea four years ago. And we, she championed it all the way through and we quickly became key players in the glamping industry. And so we are, we serve on the Board of the American Glamping Association, which is a thing. We didn't know that it was a thing either. So don't feel bad. So yeah, we've.
How long, I've heard of glamping. How long has it been around?
Yeah, before any of us were born.
Not before I was born.
No, I'm being like the very, like if you look at the glamping history, they, they classify some of the generals tents along that same line. And what we're actually putting up is the same exact style that many of the generals used in the Revolution Civil and so, yeah.
Well, I didn't know they were glamping back here.
I don't think they were either. I think we refined it a little bit, but it's the same concept. We just. Really easy. We put a hotel, a nice hotel inside of a tent. So you get all the same camping that many of us grew up with, right? But it has all the comforts that people have come to enjoy these days. So, yeah.
I've done some research on the company and I liked the premise and the idea. Tell me about, tell us about other examples that are similar to this in other communities, because you guys have been involved in other communities and gone through this process.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna start with our Lake Lanier location, which is right on in Forsyth County. That's our closest one to here. That's where we started. And we started in two thousand eighteen. We did the same type of deal that we're proposing or would like to do with Dawson County. And it's, yes.
And that's a precise maintenance or maintain part.
Yes.
Just like what we got.
It's, yes, sir. And so we, we moved in there in two thousand eighteen with three sites and we clicked, quickly grew. And we, since May first of two thousand twenty, we've been booked at a hundred percent. So and that includes, that's Sunday through Saturday, like every single day. So, so we really do have a supply and demand problem. We, we recently reached out this in April, March of this, March, April of this year to Columbia County down near Augusta. We're in Apling, Georgia, on another county owned or county operated campground that's also owned by the Corps. So exactly the same type of situation. We moved in there and it was a lot of blank faces at first and they, they gave us their four worst sites, which was very generous of them. And they called us back in, in two months and said, we didn't get it. Now we get it. What do you want? And so we moved into six sites, six sites that were all right next to each other. So, so, yeah. A lot of the keys to our success is we partner with community. Like that's the big thing for us is when we have different add-ons, like let's say you wanted eggs delivered to your site. You don't want me delivering eggs because I don't have a chicken. And so, but we partner with folks that do and we, we promote other small businesses within our community. And that's what we'd like to do here as well.
Well, just a comment. I know it's very popular because I've seen it. I've had a lot of the campsites that I've been to over the last year since I got a camper of my own. So it's very popular.
The great thing, one of the great things about Dawson County is the recreation opportunities that we provide. And it's everything from the lake to the mountains. And really, we don't have a, a good offering of camp rooms. I mean, we've got ours there and then we've got Emma Close Falls and nothing in between. So again, I've done a lot of research on keeping in general and this type of product and it meets a big need and it gets people that, that maybe have no desire to come up and spend the night in the woods, to come up and spend the night in the woods.
Yeah, it's true. I think they touched on the, the glamping numbers for this year. I believe that number is actually pre-pandemic number, to be honest. And the numbers out of K O A, who did a bigger research on this whole deal, is projected to have glamping out of twenty-five billion dollar industry by the year twenty twenty-five. And so this, this isn't going anywhere. They pointed at some of the numbers of what the new campers are preferring. And those, those are very accurate numbers. So, yeah.
Do you guys collect hotel motel tax?
We do. So, yeah. So that would be a pass through to, do you guys have a C V B? Or do y'all collect hotel motel tax? Okay. Yeah. So what we, we fall in line. And so along with that, at our Forsyth County location, we do not. We just adjust the night, the, the percentages back to the county. So they still are getting it. But at our Clarksville locate, or yeah, Clarksville location down in Columbia County, we do collect a C, a hotel motel tax and pay them every, every month.
Other questions?
So say somebody's rented the facility and they come there Saturday night to move in or whatever, and there's an issue with the refrigerator, the air conditioner. How do y'all deal with that?
Yeah, that would be a call to our office, not to y'all. Sometimes you guys, like the, the park host will get a call. And she, like at all of our parks, they quickly know to, they have our number on file and our office takes care of that. So we, that's another key point to what we do is we have, we have great staff members. And we, we do, we do reach a demographic of staffing that is underutilized sometimes, and that is a lot of stay-at-home moms. And so because they don't have the bandwidth to drop their kids off at school and then go find another job. Well, our, we'd fall right in line. And so we have, we have an amazing staff at both locations and we continue to do the same plan up here. So, but we handle all the, all of the issues. The only time the park gets involved, like Parks and Rec would get involved, is let's say there's a plumbing issue or something like that. Or, or just something with the bathhouse, stuff, stuff like that. Then we would fall, we would work together with the campground to resolve it as quickly as possible. So.
Yes, the general maintenance still would fall under Parks and Recreation. We would still maintain the entire park. Their site, of course, would be there. I say there, whoever receives this contract would be in charge of their own site and all the, the, the stuff that you're referring. The general maintenance still falls under our deal with the Corvus.
So the, the, the contract that we're discussing is the company engages or contract with us and guarantees so many nights or something. So it's, it's not like.
Basically turn all the booking over to those six campsites to them.
Yeah. It's not somebody that's just gonna rent out six sites and throw up tents and, I mean, it's gonna be very structured to that swit.
Excuse, do you have any trouble with sale? Somebody's got a torn up refrigerator and they know right where to go to.
You would, you would think that that might be an issue, but as of right now, we, we had one thing stolen back in two thousand eighteen. It was a lantern. And you know what? Maybe he needed it more than we did and we just blessed him. And you know, we, we don't really, we, with our, with our occupancy, there's very little time for people to get in and try to take off with stuff. They are like the tents, the accommodations that we utilize, they are lockable. And so we are able to lock them up. And, and so not that it can't happen, not that it won't happen, but it's very, very seldom.
I want, I want Brooke to coordinate the butterflies with the camp, to wake up in the morning and all butterflies flying around. Teach the butterflies.
I tell you what.
That's right. I agree. Yeah, yeah. Check that out. And yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm loving this. Butterflies and glamping. Boy, this is good.
This is a great meeting.
We have, we have. I'm so relaxed. I can't stand it.
What's, do we know what it's gonna cost us from left to run to the site or?
I, I don't know that yet, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna be very much. We're not talking about a very long distance.
Pretty close to where?
Yes, close to the camp. That's why we picked out, not only are the two, the, I'm sorry, the six campsites that we have sort of designated, I guess you could say. Not only are they the best as far as the visual and it's isolated, they're closest to the bathhouse. They're not all the way down at the point. So I don't think it's gonna be something that's gonna destroy my budget by no means, and we'll be happy to put a man because we can use it for a lot of other things.
No plumbing, just electrical.
No plumbing.
And it does, I mean, just looking at the map, it does isolate the other sites. I mean, these are, these are, where you pick those is they're, they're separated out from other ones down. Because they're kind of consolidated right down there in the point.
If they could build some bridge and we can get that other out. Because y'all have some beautiful places over there.
Corporate engineers let you do it. They want it done.
How much electricity does the campsite require?
That's a great question. So the, the A C units that we use at the campground, they're generally a thirty amp dedicated circuit and we, we let that be on its own deal. Because it is a full residential A C heating mini split. And, and so, and then the rest of it, and we do, all of our A C units are SEER nineteen and above to keep costs low. And then the, the rest of the site operates off of a twenty amp. So it'd be a thirty and a twenty, and that's it.
Other questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have presentation of a board appointment, Long Range Planning Committee, Steve Pollak, replacing Tim Costin. Mr. Pollak was with us yesterday, came by and was part of our discussion. So I'll recommend him to y'all at our next meeting to be appointed to the Long Range Planning Committee. And he was vetted by the Long Range Planning Committee as we generally let them do, and that was their recommendation. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have in reference to that.
I take it he can meet when they meet.
Yeah.
Because, you know, Tim, that, that's his reason for leaving.
Yeah.
He couldn't meet. And so, okay.
From what I gathered from talking to Terry and that he was all in.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So next is presentation of resolution concerning memorandum of understanding for opioid litigation settlement. Jeff, you gonna take care of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. You have a form of resolution for you and your.
And, and so not that it can't happen and not that it won't happen, but it's very, very seldom.
I want, I want Brooke to coordinate the butterflies with the, to wake up in the morning and all butterflies flying around. Keep your butterflies.
I'll tell you what.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. Check that out. And yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm loving this. Butterflies and glamping. Boy, this is good. We have, we have, I'm too relaxed. I can't stand it.
Do we know what it's going to cost us from left to run to these sites or?
I, I don't know that yet, but I don't, I don't think it's going to be very much. We're not talking about a very long distance.
Pretty close to where.
Yes, close to the camp. That's why we picked out, not only are the two, the, I'm sorry, the six campsites that we have sort of designated, I guess you could say. Not only are they the best as far as the visual and it's isolated, they're closest to the bathhouse. They're not all the way down at the point. So I don't think it's going to be something that's going to destroy my budget by no means. And we'll be happy to put them in because we can use it for a lot of other things.
No plumbing, just electrical.
No plumbing, just electrical.
And it does, I mean, just looking at the map, it does isolate the other sites. I mean, these are, these are, where you pick those is they're, they're separated out from other ones down. Because they're kind of consolidated down there in the point.
If they could build a bridge and we can get that other out. Y'all have some beautiful places over there.
How much electricity does the, do the campsites require?
That's a great question. So the, the AC units that we use at the campground, they're generally a 30 amp dedicated circuit. And we, we let that be on its own deal because it is a full residential AC heating mini split. And, and so, and then the rest of it, and we do, all of our AC units are SEER 19 and above to keep costs low. And then the, the rest of the site operates off of a 20 amp. So it'd be a 30 and a 20 and that's it.
Other questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have presentation of a board appointment, Long Range Planning Committee, Steve Pollak replacing Tim Costin. Mr. Pollak was with us yesterday, came by and was part of our discussion. So I'll recommend him to y'all at our next meeting to be appointed to the Long Range Planning Committee. And he was vetted by the Long Range Planning Committee as we generally let them do, and that was their recommendation. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have in reference to that.
I take it he can meet when they meet.
Yeah.
Because, you know, Tim, that, that's his reason for leaving.
Yeah.
He couldn't meet. And so, okay.
From what I gathered from talking to Terry and that he was all in.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So next is presentation of resolution concerning memorandum of understanding for opioid litigation settlement. Jeff, you going to take care of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. You have a form of resolution for you in your packet, which also has some attachments to it. You also received, I think at an earlier time, maybe a few weeks ago, a letter that we had received from a law firm that represents the county along with a variety of other local governments and state. This opioid litigation's been going on for quite some time now. We have before us an opportunity to participate by joining in a settlement of that $26 billion amount. Unsure how that might be allocated or apportioned amongst all the parties and what requirements may be on the monies. But recommendation from the law firm is to agree to participate in the settlement. And what the resolution requires is appointment of a representative. Upon agreeing to participate in the settlement, appointing a representative to fill out paperwork and get it submitted back to the law firm by a date certain. I do notice, in fact, in the information that we had received, that they are looking to get these documents returned back to them by December 8th. So we're in good shape as far as the meetings are concerned. But if you, and you have this designation of a representative agreement to participate in the settlement, and that's the issue that's before you in the resolution.
How many billions did you say?
Twenty-six.
So attorneys will get 2.5 and we'll get $2.50.
I'm not going to get any. I have no idea how it's allocated.
Is, is there anything negative about, I mean, to me, it seems like a no-brainer that we would opt in, but is there anything negative?
There's not.
Okay.
I will add that a certain number of governments have to opt in before it kicks in. And probably will happen, but yeah. And we have the opportunity to back out at any time. So. It is a no brainer.
All right. Other questions for Jeff? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Next up, we have presentation of request to apply for and accept an FY 2022 emergency management performance grant. Mr. Danny.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the annual EMPG grant that Dawson County has had for many years. The grant dollars did not change this year. So the total amount is $15,568. Dawson County's match is $7,784. This grant is typically used for weather sirens maintenance for our rave platform, which is the storm notification and various other pieces of equipment. The grants portal, when it becomes due, it actually became due and needed to be completed in between work sessions and being able to be completed. And they approve it typically within 72 hours now. So it was already, it's already been approved and submitted because the deadline was before I could get it before the board. So it has already been approved and accepted. So I'd ask that the board just go ahead and accept.
Move that to the, tonight and ratify that. Questions for Danny? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
County manager report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Your key indicator report for the month of October, as well as the list of the agreements and contracts is in your packet that I've signed. This is an online document for the citizens to review as well as a performance measure in the different departments. I also want to highlight one of our employees. But first, National GIS Day was Wednesday, November the 17th. The GIS is a scientific framework for gathering, analyzing, and visualizing geographic data to help us make better decisions. Dawson County uses GIS in planning and development, public works, and EMS for mapping information. It has been used to assist in locating missing hikers and developing interactive maps, such as the future land use map contours, as well as the current land use map. And as you, as you know, GIS is a kind of a standalone form and they're not, they're highly not recognized, but yet perform a great techno, technological product for not only the citizens of the county, but the staff as well. So Devin Cox, who is our GIS representative, I just wanted to recognize her for the things that she's been doing there, the overlays and, and things of that nature that consistently help us out. So I did want to recognize her today in front of the board. Also, the county offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday for November the 25th and 26th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And that's just my short report for today.
Questions of the county manager? Thank you, David. County attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report.
Okay. I don't think there's any need for executive session, but I've been told.
There is none. No, sir.
All right. So with that, that ends our work session for today. We will be back at 6 o'clock with our voting session. Welcome any and everyone to come and be with us. And so with that, we'll be adjourned until 6 o'clock.